Did they open beyond, uh, Ham Lake?
Yeah.
They just got hurt.
Yeah.
It was like ninety-eight, sixty, whatever.
Oh, it was that bad?
Yeah.
I started listening to it and I didn't follow the rest.
We gave all of those noting. Yeah, we were really on it.
We have running here, Ms. Krista?
We are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we're at the six P M., so I'd like to call the school district. Board meeting for the school district's order. Scott, Mr. Lingerfeld, I haven't heard anything from him this time either. So he's the only absent member at this time. Next up is our board financial audit.
I had Ms. Newman pull three invoices, one for Oak Ridge Chemical, which runs the floor scrubber. Uh, one was for Squires and Walzberger, their attorney. Then one for Blaine Brothers, who does mechanic work. All three, just, just random. Everything was in orders, signed the way they're supposed to be signed and very detailed and everything. Everything was good there, so nothing, nothing out of, nothing out of place.
And I looked over everything and the preciseness and the, the, the way that everything is, you know, exactly who did it, what it was for, is really nice because before it would just be hardly anything. So I, and I, I asked on, um, it was a student that is in the youth apprentice or youth, is it youth apprentice, right? You know, because I thought scrubs and I go, okay, well, and then I forgot that they, they get a fund grant and things like that, so they get up to five hundred dollars to purchase equipment, supplies, you know, things of that sort, so, um, for their job. But again, I told Deb that, uh, the, the piece of it being so well laid out and telling us exactly what it was for is very nice, and I said she does a good job and she's fabulous. That was my answer, my, my discussion with Deb today. So everything was good. All right. Next up is our board election deadlines. And deadline for incumbents, incumbents is by December twenty-sixth by five P M. And candidate deadlines for filing to be on ballot is for January sixth. Okay.
And could you refresh my memory, is it you and Steve that are?
Steve and I are up.
That are, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We're next here.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yes. All right. W S B board two thousand twenty-six legislative agenda. Is there anything in particular that this?
No, I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that this was approved by the W S B board. So next month we will ask for a delegate to be approved. But this is the agenda that was approved by the board of directors for W S B. So if you get a chance, you can see some of the discussion points that they were there and then also think about those of you that are going to the convention, if you would like to be the delegate that represents our district.
All right. So next up, uh, entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Is that made by Jody?
Yeah.
Motion made by Jody, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Derek, any further discussion? If anyone, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Next up is our open forum area, any community members for that? Great. Next up is our consent agenda. We have items A, uh, A through U that are in front of us. Are there any items on the agenda that anybody would like pulled or have further discussion?
I would like to have further discussion on T. It was really cool area impact because of maintenance proposal.
Okay.
So T is, uh, when I got here, we had a contract with NAMI, North American Mechanical, and I couldn't have been more disappointed in what they offered. It was the same company too that was in charge of our rooftop units when our sped unit started on fire. So I don't know how long we dealt with straight line winds and then a fire within three, four months. We had a rolling contract and we finally got out of it. I got to, um, Cool Air won the bid for Mark and Johnson with the C T project when I first was hired. And from a standpoint of the comparables, I'll do it this way. When you look at, uh, the maintenance, so this is the yearly maintenance and the cost is pretty comparable except Cool Air now comes out four times where, uh, North NAMI would come out two times. In addition to that, um, after the preventive maintenance, which basically they replace, uh, filters and go through each one of our units, they would send us a bill of about twenty-five grand to say you need to fix this, 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 this. And quite honestly, it was loaded and we knew that because I had comparables done by Cool Air and some other people that I know in the industry. And we just got done, um, so we put it kind of out and I wanted, I signed a contract, or this contract is for one year, uh, because I want to see how they do preventive maintenance. And they were just out roughly two weeks ago and their list is also, um, where it's three grand. And I don't think they're price gouging, they're honest. I know the, one of the main guys, um, because he is, I worked with him this, the summer that I came or was hired, um, and his kids are, uh, went to New Richmond. So I got to know him and, um, got to know the company and it is by far much better. And so this is just a trial, but so far, so good. It's been a really good experience in terms of the preventive maintenance program.
Yeah, I guess, um, the question I had about it is they are in Ham Lake, Minnesota, which is roughly an hour away. And I wasn't sure, did we follow a bidding process for this work?
Not sure.
Internal order?
For this one, no, because the, um, the contract was up at the end of last year. And then for this year, I didn't want to go through a full, um, process because we were running into preventative maintenance timeline before winter started. So for me, I went with Cool Air because I want to see how they, um, basically, I mean, we've worked with them, obviously you've seen Cool Air, but as far as the overall bidding, no. But that's the reason I signed it one year or bring it to you guys a one year to see how does it go and then we'll open it up fully for next year.
Okay. I just think, yeah, I mean, it is thirty thousand, um, and so many time we're spending probably over a threshold that you're approved for, which I don't think we've cruised like five, five or ten thousand.
Ten thousand, yeah.
I think we should follow that bidding process. I do have concerns that if we're not following that, any audits or, um, other reception groups could, could start to, you know, occur and so that's my only feedback on that.
No, and, and it truly came down to timing, um, of, because of Ryan's exit and Tim's entry, getting some of this in place for this coming year. In terms of even NAMI, NAMI's out of middle Wisconsin and their closest person actually just moved to Leva. So it was still roughly an hour and a half drive wherever they were, which was La Salle, some in that area. But to your point, yes, we did not follow that official one. But in the same regard, um, that's where we've been trying to take every single contract that we have in our district and try to put it in that document I've shown you, to see where are we at, how, how many years do we have with certain companies and then what it looks like. But.
Yeah, no, and I know it's a struggle, right, with, with Ryan's departure and, and, uh, and some of those handoffs and we've had good luck with this company for sure. They seem to do good work, but same time we've got really good companies in the area and it's always good to support those companies too, if, if they're fit for the work.
So when would we look at doing the bidding process?
Uh, that would be more of a spring, spring, summer type of thing for next year. As we, because we're going to be starting building budget this December, which is very shortly. Got to get through the first year with W twos and so forth, but we're starting, especially with, by any budget already determined, we can actually get ahead of the game a little bit. You're going to hear me talk later tonight about compensation because I hope to actually get ahead of that. We not only have to look towards the whole compensation system, but again, with any outdone, we're going to be sitting in better, not guessing.
All right, is there any other clarifications or discussions by anybody? I was just wondering on the co-curricular handbook, is there an update to that or why are we doing that now? Isn't that the same story?
There wasn't.
Oh.
So.
It was put out to the parents though, we all seen it.
The athletic handbook.
Yeah, yeah.
So the history behind this is this was something that Marcy was working on because we ran into situations where Mr. Score does the athletic handbook and that's what you guys approved in August. We were having issues with individuals that were in co-curricular my first year. Because whether it's yearbook, uh, whether it's F F A, that type of thing. And where I came from, uh, we had a, it was a mixture. And if you look at, you know, Mr. Score's official title per se, you know, the co-curricular is also in there. So Marcy was working on a co-curricular and it never got finished. So, um, Richie, uh, Mr. Nargis picked up the pieces, uh, with Mr. Popco and myself and we've been meeting this fall because when you think about the standard set for athletics, these kids are held to a higher standard. If you look at some of these other activities, whether it's, um, you know, any co-curricular such as DECA, um, we look at, uh, yearbook, um, they're not held to that higher standard. So we want something to hold them to that standard and making sure that they, you know, if they do something that goes against a school rule, um, they're held accountable for that. So this actually is a creation from scratch. It did, a lot of it came from the athletic handbook, but there was language changes through a subcommittee and then Mr. Nargis, Mr. Popco and myself, uh, finished it off.
Okay, thank you. All right, any others?
I would like to point out, since she's sitting here, thanks to Dr. Curtis making a generous donation to our angel fund.
Okay, anything else? All right, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
So.
Motion to be made by Chuck, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Derek. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Motion carried. Next is our state report card.
So, um, I asked the administrative team not to create any reports because I wanted to spend some time, um, going over the state report card, which was released on the sixth of November. Lots of documents in there with details. Now, we will be having a work session where we will dive into not only the report card, but our district data as a whole. This is just one piece of the puzzle. This is not the end all be all. And I wanted to have a discussion with the administrators here in terms of where we're at and the things and steps that we're doing. I want to bring your attention and I'll just pull up the documents that you're looking at. One of the things that I'm accustomed to doing, um, every year since I've been superintendent is I go back and you can see the data and I know it's small, so you're going to have to pull it up on yours. But if you look at the inception of the report card, you can see the data for Glenwood City. I wanted to pay particular attention to this bottom column, or row, excuse me. One of the issues that I have always had with the report card, um, I really have always been a proponent of the accountability. I think it puts schools on notice and putting them accountable for a variety of reasons. It's a data point and I look at it as a three-legged stool. You have local data, you have state data, and then you have your data. When I say local, we're talking Fastbridge. And then the third stool is, is what classroom teachers should be doing in terms of assessing as they exit the classroom, you know, it's informal data, um, or assessment. This bottom row is the number, there's notes in there. And I think anybody that enjoys data, um, understands that when you are constantly changing the formula, it's very hard to take trend data and compare it year after year. And so I would caution you in terms of, you know, when you look at a report card and you guys know, um, whether you're a parent or whether a board member, this thing has changed numerous times. It used to be this, uh, outline of Wisconsin and there was a number and then there was a star system. And again, I'm all about changing, um, making sure that things are more efficient. But if you look at, um, whether it's a parent, most people, they focus right here in the score summary. They look at this number, they look at the stars and that's all they look at. And it's very difficult to take, um, that information and really, um, understand where you are as a district. So what I've done over, and I pulled from my years past, is each one of these notes is basically what changed on the report card. And when you look at that, um, the, the year, I mean, there was years where there was no change, but then there's COVID, there was no report card based on different things. There was changeover from Governor Mary Evers to the current D E I superintendent. So again, I just wanted to make sure you, um, are cautioned in terms of some of those data points and going directly to, uh, the part right here where it's the overall score and the exceeds expectations, meets expectations, et cetera. Now, that doesn't diminish the fact that this is a report card that is given to every school, public school within the state of Wisconsin. And from that standpoint, that is also another, um, I would say, uh, argumentative point because the private schools in Wisconsin are not held to this standard. And as we see more and more privatization of education, that's always been a sticky point. At least we've talked about as superintendents. When you come back to the overall trend data, you're going to see a variety of pieces of information, including, um, you know, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged. And again, some of the categories have changed, some of the weighting has changed and so on. With that said, that's outlined both in the district report card, the high school report card, the middle school report card, the elementary report card, and then I also have always tracked A C T data. And so you'll see again, um, quite a bit of, and I'm having trouble, as Derek knows, Derek and I were emailing this weekend, my Adobe software is not saving things the way it should. And I just caught this one right here, so, um, that's on my end. But overall, if you look at the trend data to say where we are at and where are we in terms of current data. So I want to go back to, um, this part where these are the report cards in general. And we have spent some time as an admin team going through, you know, what this data is, how does it, um, score, what is, um, areas of focus, um, when we come to improvement plans. So there's going to be, there used to be actually only two report, or there would be a report card, a detailed. be a report card, a detailed, and then a kind of a shorter version. You're going to see the detailed version and there's a lot of data that's here. And again, it's good because it's quality data in terms of the, uh, forward test, um, and then it leads into the ACT. So again, I don't want to diminish, diminish the report card itself because if you look at our overall score, which I included in our presentation for our PLD today with staff, um, if you look at this, um, seventy-one point two, uh, we exceed expectation as a district. So that's four out of five. If you look at, um, the high school, um, excuse me. You look at the high school, we're at seventy-six point three, which is exceeds expectation. If you look at the middle school, we're at seventy-seven point eight, which exceeds expectations. And then at the elementary, we're at fifty-six, uh, which meets few expectations. And in the line you'll see, um, I compared it to the state, which means we are fifty percent better, um, than fifty-eight percent of the schools within the state and so on. Um, there's a lot to celebrate here in terms of if you look at that overall score, especially at our middle school, high school. Um, but again, it's one data point and then we'll use some of the other assessments that we have to make some better changes to the curriculum that we're here. Um, you know, when we hired our interim principal, um, Dr. Curtis, this is right up her wheelhouse. And so, um, Jamie and Sue and myself are sitting down, having meetings and looking at what these are from a gen ed standpoint. And then Aaron's part of the, the special ed component. Couple of things that I want to, uh, point out in terms of the overall report card, you can go in and you can look at it. Is there any questions on the overall format or the data itself? We haven't really dove into it, uh, we will as, as our admin team meets and kind of goes at some of these scores. Um, I do want to talk, um, about the elementary, which obviously, you know, it can be seen that we struggle. Um, Jamie walked into a pretty, um, difficult position in the elementary. And one of the things that I talked about in our report card presentation, um, we didn't go into a lot of details, I just presented this to the staff. But if you look at the overall, when I first was hired, um, there was three components that seventy-five percent of the staff talked to me about as far as, you're the new superintendent, here's the, the issues that have come up. And the, um, existing board members have heard this before, the new board members haven't heard it much. Um, the first one was student behavior. And student behavior was a big issue. Um, not only were they discussing the overall flow of what we were trying to accomplish on a daily basis, uh, ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of our students make the right choice, but the two percent is basically take up majority of the time. And we didn't have good process and procedures, which has been kind of a common theme. Um, middle school, high school, the same thing. And when you look at the work, and I'll get to the elementary, uh, the work that has been done, um, pretty substantial in such a short amount of time. The number two thing was staff accountability. And I think once again, um, our job as admin is to make sure, number one, there's the evaluation process, which we've done the ten-minute evaluation walkthroughs, um, but also understanding DPI is making some major changes with the EE process. Um, staff accountability, um, as you know, we have gone through some staff members that are no longer here. Um, and again, that high accountability, I think is one of the reasons why. The third, uh, uh, point that was is just more so on my end where follow-through, if you say you're going to do it, please do it. Staff professionalism, um, you know, those things kind of go hand in hand. Trust, um, transparency, all those things that we've been talking about. When you go back to where we are, there's certainly a lot of, I would say, celebration if you took only the scores of the high school, middle school. Um, taken into account, I think at the high school level especially, we have a pretty advanced, um, ACT prep process here that I think makes a major difference. Uh, Mr. Popco, um, and from a spec standpoint, Ms. Spencer and all the high school teachers, the prep process is actually one of the more robust that I've seen in my career, um, in the schools that I came from. Now, does that mean it's a, that's the difference maker? No, I think, uh, we would all agree that when you see scores like this, I will throw this caveat out there too. A year ago, we were talking about how did a DPI change the cut score? And in my career, the cut score has been changed on a number of, uh, different, um, major assessments, including the star. We used to have a, uh, program that we've used in the past, and even at the federal level, they've taken the cut score and they've adjusted it. DPI took a lot of heat last summer, uh, the previous summer, and then last fall because they changed the cut score. Uh, Mr. Popco was part of that group that went down to the state and had those conversations. And what you saw was basically most districts made a jump up. The other thing that I will say is in my previous district, uh, we were consistently in the top ten percent of state schools. And one of the schools particularly, it was a five-star school, one of our elementaries, and the next year it dropped to a three-star in one year. And one thing you'll see in the data points is, is how many years of data collection is taken into account when it comes to the formula. So again, I, I think there's, you, you can't get too high and you can't take, uh, get too low. And we, that's kind of my message to our admin team, to our staff, that we absolutely should celebrate because there's a lot of good things because in the end, we're being compared to other schools and this is where we're at. But in the same regard, when cut scores are changed, when formulas are adjusted, it doesn't give you a true representation from year to year. With that said, um, I'll go back to the elementary. I think all of us would agree that this is not acceptable. The number is not where it should be. Um, but I think the more, um, prevalent discussion tonight would be this action plan. If you think of the things that have taken place in the elementary and more so, um, what Ms. Schaefer has brought to our district, this is the reason she was hired, um, you again are looking at a very comprehensive list. And we all know that from a data standpoint, you know, it's going to take some time to implement that. Um, case in point is, is that Ms. Schaefer has fourth grade teachers teaching second grade material in fourth grade. Now, again, that's not a representation of her leadership. Unfortunately, that is a byproduct of things that she walked into. And I want to make it very clear that when you look at this plan, there's quite a few things that need to be addressed, um, or have been addressed and will continue to be addressed, and it's going to take some time. So we can't jump to conclusions in terms of, and say our elementary is not, um, successful because I think if you walk through there, you'll see all the things that I see on a daily basis. Um, the other thing I pointed out to the staff today was, when you think about my two years here, um, there's a lot of great things that happened prior to me. My son's a senior engineering student in Madison, and he didn't get there without our staff. And so again, um, I don't want to diminish the fact that we have had so many success stories coming out of our district. I think one thing that we can agree upon is, is the process and procedures has not been consistent. And that's the part that a lot of our work is being done. If you look at Jamie's list in terms of her accomplishments and things that she's implemented at the elementary level, um, it's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take some time, not only from, you know, some of the changes we've made from professional development, it's not going to, we had what, three maybe, um, half-days for professional development prior, and then we made the change to a full-day PLD. And if you would come and see the work that's done in our PLCs, the documentation, the discussions, the data that's being looked at, um, it's ninety. It truly is. And I think any of us that have had to implement a improvement plan of any degree would understand it's going to take some time to get that. But I'm, not only do I believe we have the right, um, principle, and again, if I could keep Sue for years and years and years, I would, um, but I really want to see her enjoy her retirement at some point, um, because she has helped me out in many ways over the years. Um, we also have great staff, and we do. Um, I think there is individuals that are no longer here for good reason, um, because they weren't part of that overall process for us to make improvements. If you look at the bottom of this sheet, you could see that, um, other things that we're working on in terms of, especially from, uh, Jamie and Erin in terms of stud, in terms of gen ed, um, there's things that we need to make some changes in terms of our process and procedures. So, um, I think one of the things that I'm pleased with as far as this admin team and our staff, we're all solution-based and that's what it becomes done to. So for me, yep, there's a great amount of pride in terms of, you know, when you see certain scores of the report card, but it also is, we're not going to get too high and we're not going to get too low because there's a whole story behind it. Any questions on any of these documents that are there?
Some of them are all kind of state comparisons, right? So when we do our workshop, do we ever compare across the conference to see, you know, maybe a little bit more regionally, the idea, you know, of those trends, if the, if the rates are shifting or if the metrics are shifting to see how it's affecting our area as a whole?
Yeah, we'll have that. Actually, Mr. Popco has already done that to the state level, um, but then we'll break it down into conference, we'll break it down into regional data.
I've seen it done as a conference and in our CISA.
Oh, sure, okay. And so the public, you know, everybody just got access to this because they go through a process where it's behind SAFE, um, and then you look at the data, but then there's tweaks and adjustments. So this is really fresh data, uh, that we haven't had time. But when we have that work session, we're going to be able to see, but you also see our forward data. So again, if you look at a three-legged stool, we have our, um, Fastbridge data, which is our local assessment. That's what Ms. Schaefer and Dr. Curtis use to put people in their win groups and put people, um, in terms of small group instruction and staff use it to make some, um, educated decision on what student it needs. Um, you also have the state assessment, which is Fab, or excuse me, a forward test and ACT. And then you have that local piece in terms of every single day, staff, um, are making assessments, whether it's a checkout sheet, whether it's, um, a, a test that you guys remember taking, um, there's a variety of ways to do that. And when you look at that three-legged school stool, you're going to be making a better sound decision. So yes, when we have that work session, you'll be able to see more comparables.
Um, you know, I, I think our biggest job here is to make sure that you have what you need to accomplish these. Um, and I, I just want to reiterate that, that we need to make sure that that is happening when the, you know, uh, curriculum or staffing, and then we've done these things before, but, um, you know, we can't do our jobs if we don't know what is needed. So when, when we, when we know what's needed, it's, you know, it's, it's helpful. You know, I, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that, that was clear.
I think, Chuck, one of the things that is difficult is, you know, Sue comes from it, I know Jamie comes from it, you know, we have a interventionist and I believe, you know, Laura was one of the first interventionists here at Wemba City. Um, I come from a coaching model where, I mean, those coaches make a, a big difference. And when it comes to staffing, we've had to really, we've had to make some adjustments because we didn't have a CT teacher, et cetera. Um, I do think there are some things that we'll be discussing in terms of staffing, in terms of mentorship, in terms of what can we do? Um, we don't have the same resources in terms of some of the bigger schools, um, it's just a fact. But so we're also in a situations where we don't have a curriculum director. I'm the curriculum director, uh, but we have pieces that are in those. I didn't want to make Jamie, uh, and put her in that role, which is what she came from because she's got a big enough job trying to turn the elementary around. But again, I think when you look at this overall plan, um, I'm very, very pleased in terms of the things that I've seen that are just general things and that should have been in place and they weren't. Um, we're talking fundamentals. And again, I, I don't want to say it in a decisive way, but again, if your fourth-grade teachers are teaching second grade level curriculum, that is a gap that has been going on for some time. And that's where we are having to come up with some pretty extreme ways because time is not on our side. We can't go back and say, oh, we get a redo. Research will tell you, you know, you don't hold students back. That is not successful. You know, research will tell you in terms of, even the state report card at one time spent so much of your score was based on, uh, the gap. Our gap is huge. And again, it was things that were in place or I should say, lack of things that were in place to get us to that point. And I think Jamie's getting us back to the fundamental pieces, whether it's UFL and some of the things that she's talked about from a curriculum standpoint. At the high school, middle school, high school level, same thing. Uh, Sue's just collecting, like, who does what? When I took the job three years ago, um, business, there was literally nothing. And we had to build it from scratch. And we're right now saying, well, what do you teach and what do you use? And there's no systematic way, um, or a systematic approach to our curriculum. It was just hodgepodge. So again, it's, it's going to take time. It's taking much more time than I thought when I took this job, but I think we have the right people in the right spots to be able to make these jumps. So, um, again, you're going to be hearing about some, I would say, uh, more extreme ways to try and make up that gap that aren't typical in the lot of districts because our, these kids deserve it. And so we're going to be talking on ways to be solution-based and say, okay, here's the hand that we're dealt, what can we do? And that's what we're going to go with it.
Ms. Schaefer, I know that Patrick had mentioned, uh, mentioned discipline being a, a big thing. Um, and I know your first year, you don't really want to, you got to get your feet and, and, and I know you were going to focus on discipline last year. Have you seen that success you've had last year with that carry over into this year? Is it, is that still part of the, the process? I'm sure it's, uh, never-ending.
Right, right, yeah. Um, yeah, so some of the things that I think it should be on that document too, um, that we tightened up as far as classifications for behaviors, what's classroom managed, what should be office managed, kind of retraining the staff for that, um, has been extremely helpful. And then just kind of an outline of what that looks like as far as consequences, um, major and minor refractions. Um, I will say that, and it could be just because it's year two for me, knowing the kids, it's been a lot better, a lot easier, right? You still have my heavy hitters, um, that have some different things going on. We still have lots of kids on, um, behavior interventions and behavior plans, um, within the school, um, who have some challenges, but I will definitely say that I feel like we're moving in the right direction with that.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah.
Yeah, they know, and I, I just, I agree with the philosophy that you got to get that, you know, under control, for lack of a better term, before you can take the next step. I mean, we need, make sure these kids are in the classroom, ready to learn and learning.
Right. And I think too, for me, it's when the disruption's happening too, getting those kids out so it doesn't affect the other kids. That's also been a huge thing that we've really focused on with staff where it's like, okay, if they're causing a major disruption, let me know, we'll get them out until they're regulated and then get them back in as soon as, you know, as soon as possible. Um, because again, that's kind of my, one of my non-negotiables is if the behavior was disaffected in learning of others, something needs to be done immediately so that the others don't get affected by it any longer.
Well, and there's a, there's a lot of things I don't, there's a lot of education speak- Well, and there's a, there's a lot of things I don't, there's a lot of education speak that I'm not up to snuff with, like I knew what closing gaps meant, but they went and changed that and called it something else. Some outcomes, something, so I, I'm looking forward to our data on this. You know, because, yeah, I have some questions and, you know, and I know you guys understand what they, they all mean, but.
Yeah, one person that I have is I agree with all the things that are going to help us get back on the track. But are there board policies or reviews that this board or the next board could do more proactively, make sure it stays on the rails, right? For the next administration or the next board, as things change? How do we nature this happen again? How do we keep an eye on it a little more proactively, right?
I think from a standpoint of, I keep coming back to process and procedures. I mean, there's a reason that you guys approved all new board policies. I mean, that just doesn't happen. I will say, I mean, this is not normal. The situation that we walked into is not normal. It's not conducive to what a foundation of public education should look like. And every single area that's sitting at this table, whether it's middle school, high school, sped, elementary or district wide, the lack of foundation in terms of process procedures has really put us behind. And I think from a standpoint, Jordan, of my philosophy has always been, I am trying to make decisions for the next person. So that we can send, you know, the, you don't have to go through this and have to rebuild it from scratch. You know, when I look at my administration team, a lot of them have been in other places now. And that's where my grounding comes in. Like, is it me, am I just like way out there? Or, and that's where Deb, when she was first here, she helped ground me, like, I thought I was going crazy. Like, how does this not exist? How does this not exist? And that's where I think our administration team looks at now. So to your point, yes, process procedures. The policies are the beginning part. But then if you look at some of these outlines in here, whether it's an RTI process, you know, how many, basic one, how many weeks of intervention should we spend on a student if we see that they need, you know, if they're having issues? Just that number alone, is it six weeks, is it four weeks? If you look at some of those things that Jamie has developed, it just doesn't jump to sped. And we had some issues here in terms of sped where students were being brought to the attention of the special education department way later than they should. And again, I think we all know that the beginning elements of an education happen in the elementary. And we have to jump on top of those things before it gets to where the gap is no longer achievable. And so I, there is no silver bullet here, I wish I could say that there was. You are going to hear some different ideas and some different requests. Obviously financially, it's always one of the main drivers. But in the same regard, we're, we're not in a typical situation because these kids deserve a quality education and we have to make up some time some way, somehow.
I feel like, maybe, and maybe I'm wrong, tell me if I'm wrong. Forty kids in a class, forty to fifty smaller staff, feels like we could have it up. Really need to be a little bit more agile. When you make a change, it can happen quicker. Does that make sense? You don't need to get a hundred staff on board, you need to get twenty staff on board, or?
Yeah, and I think like, one thing with my staff that I'm always telling Mr. Olson is, is they're all so eager, they're all so ready, like, okay, what do we need to do? How, you know, how are we going to accomplish this? They know I'm very solution based as far as, okay, this is the issue, but what are the solutions for it? You know, you ask like, what can you do as a board to ensure? I think, you know, by you just saying Chuck, that you can't wait to dive in and learn more, it's important to understand all this, right? Because you look at some of the historical data that Patrick had told, even for the elementary school, you can start to see it slide down, you can start to see those scores sliding down. So as soon as it all slid down, you should have taken a look at what's going on? What's happening? Because we were at seventy-one point eight and now we're at fifty-five point eight. And yes, it's different comparables and different things. But there's things that can go into effect, catch it before it gets to where they are. I think one of the biggest things that I learned right when I got here is it wasn't a special problem, it wasn't an intervention problem. When I looked at all these kids who were low, I'm like, it's a core instructional problem. We're not giving these kids, eighty percent of our kids, the core instruction that they need. So it's just starting at that, at that ground zero part. So, yeah, just keep asking questions, you know? And then you say, Chuck, get, you know, get us everything that we need and that's exactly it. I'm going to Patrick handing workbooks for my kids, absolutely. Get a quote, we'll get it, you know? Need to get UFL and training for all my staff, yep, absolutely. Those are the things, you know, when we're coming saying, okay, this is what we're doing. Constantly having you guys support, all of that helps accomplish what we're trying to accomplish on the elementary school.
I just, I, you know, to her point, I mean, it may sound minimal to some, but the fact that we did not have workbooks in the elementary.
Or teacher manuals.
Or manuals.
Teacher manuals.
It just, you shake your head like, how did these teachers even function on a weekly basis without those resources? And that's not fair to them. And we were asking them to do things that they didn't have the proper resources, to your point. And so I, I just think there's, like I said, there's, we're in the situation we are and for us as an admin team and as a staff and to Jamie's point, we have staff that are just eager, like, you just tell us what we need to do and we'll do it. And that's, I think, you know, we can all agree that that's probably why we're here. I know it's why I'm here. I didn't ask for some of the things that I've endured in two years, but in the same regard, I grew up, not grew up, I'm not from here, sorry, but my wife is and I've lived here my entire professional career. And that's what brought me here. There's good people. And I think we have people in the right spots. And, you know, again, the PLDs I think are very indicative of the work that's being done. It's just going to take some time to.
I just wanted to add, I'm typically usually actually quite inspired by the things that you bring, that you present to us and the things that you're actioning. So hopefully, I think Patrick teed it up well that this scorecard isn't the all in all. And when you read books like How School Worked by Ari Duncan, who led public instruction for the entire country, that was one of the first things he points out is that some years we can raise the expectations, which then lowers all the scores. In other years, if you actually loosen the expectations, all the scores improve. And in reality, you actually, that's a point against the students because you've lowered the expectations. So I know you got other assessments in place to hopefully that we're seeing the right trends there. I know we paid for some of the tracking mechanism software, so maybe we can build some of those control plans in place to to Jordan's point, so that we, we have, it sounds like you already got some things that you've identified. Hey, when we see the soundtrack.
Yeah, and that's the stuff that I'd rather look at, and that's the conversations I've had with Patrick. You know, I said, yeah, the accountability score, okay, fifty-six. That's, that's a tough pill to swallow, I said, but what I'd rather look at is our local UFL data. What was the beginning of the year assessment score that they have? What is our mid-year assessment score? Where are those trends projecting? I had a kindergarten teacher who I think, pretty sure she said she's been teaching for twelve years. She was in a previous district before that, but she came in and she's like, oh my gosh, Jamie UFL is working. And she kind of giggled, she goes, I should have been doing this twelve years ago. She's like, I can't believe the difference in my kindergarteners that this is making. You know, so hearing things like that, and again, I, I tell my staff, yes, we've got a bunch of great students and a bunch of great families here, but it's the staff that keeps me going because like I said, they're so eager to make changes. They're so eager to do what's best for kids. They've got that attitude of, okay, what, what do we need to do for these kids? Right in front of us now. So yeah, is it ideal that I have fourth grade teachers teaching second grade phonics content? No, but it's where they're at right now and that's what we need to do. And so I kind of tease the fourth grade teachers, all right, you're teaching primary right now, this is how you're going to have to do it, you know? Because again, if we just keep teaching where they're not, they're never going to get there. So we got to kind of meet them where they are and try to pull them up with the intent services and that kind of stuff that we're, that we're doing, so.
And I think that's, that's the key comment, you know, we have to meet those students on a daily basis of where they're. And, you know, we can sit there and think and point fingers and all so on. But again, I give a lot of credit to ladies to my right and our staff, they're just, okay, solution based, what do we need to do? And how do we do that? And our job as administrator is, is to pee the crap off them. It's to make sure that, you know, we don't just hand them, which I know has been consistent here. Here's the curriculum. Good luck. I know that's a fact.
And I think too, just doing, having my staff do the required UFL training. I offered it, I said it was going to be required K three. I had K five all participate and then every single one of them couldn't believe that they got training on it. It's like, that's kind of standard, wouldn't we adopt the curriculum? And we should, so it was just to see how surprised they were that everybody got the training and it wasn't just a train one person and then that person tried to share their ideas or their things and that kind of stuff. So that's what's.
Yeah, I, like you said, it, we will have a chance in our work session where we really dive into just these topics, but is there any other overall comments that anyone else? Any questions? All right, well, that concludes our reports. There's a lot of good stuff that has happened in the last month. And I think most of you know, whether it's from my updates or just in general, a lot of exciting things that are going on in our school. But they'll come back with a report here in December.
All right, it looks like we have Mr. Score with the presentation of our athletic.
All right, Mr. Olson said that you guys have this information, so I'll try to give you the quick piece to it here. So I, I was looking at this and I was really astounded. If you look as we go through the honor roll kids, we have over eighty percent of our athletes in the fall are on the honor roll. That's, that shocked me last week because I was putting the finishing touches on this. Got for fall, I've got a number of students that participated, the coaches. One thing Nikki and I talked a fair bit about, we actually have due to growing numbers, we've got a little bit of a transportation issue with our cheer team. She and I have bounced a couple of ideas back and forth. And, and yeah, we got to, we got to figure that out because, you know, you might be looking at, talking about taking two buses to football games or do we have two groups of cheer? One's, one's both on the way and one's just, one only travels, one doesn't. So we'll, we'll get to that as we go. I was really appreciative of Tammy Erickson and Jessica Hager for volunteering to drive extra vehicles just to get our girls there. So that, that was great. And then for some of the sports, we also had some all-conference athletes. So just kind of want to point that out too, as we go. So football, same thing, very high percentage with honor roll. Volleyball was a very high percentage as well, twenty-seven, yeah, I was twenty-eight. So a lot of good stuff there. Middle school also had high honor roll percentages as well. Yep, so volleyball as well. So just a couple of things, and I know I'm kind of bringing it up later. I've done these presentations a number of years ago. It's been a little bit, a little while, but I looked back and we consistently used to be above fifty percent of our athletes of our high school students were, were in athletics. We've, we've dropped a little bit. I, I looked it up, you know, what's the national average? Well, we're well above that, but for a small school, you know, I think that's, you would hope for that. Middle school, we were at fifty-four point four percent. Again, previously that was over sixty percent. I don't have all the answers to that, but just some thoughts that, you know, how can we, you know, work on some of these things and, you know, societal draws are, are tough to, tough to work against sometimes. So girls' basketball is undefeated currently, they're, why not? They play again tomorrow night. So yeah, that was a fun game the other night, marks the only. Boys' basketball has just started, their first game is next Tuesday. Wrestling also just started and their first event will be next Friday, the John Tim Wrestling Invitational. Good number so far. And then yeah, the singlets and some new practice mats. Here, I just wanted to put those in. So I don't know when the singlets will get here, but, you know, that'll be kind of fun to see. It's always fun, they're a part of the uniform notation, of course, so. Boys' basketball is about halfway through the season. They've been fun to watch, some kids that I teach, you know, that I wasn't necessarily aware that they were going to be good basketball guys. They're, they're doing pretty well, both the seventh and eighth grade, eighth grades, really good. Girls' basketball, we have a sign up currently. Four eighth graders are signed up. We actually have seven seventh graders currently signed up. The last two years, we did have sixth graders welcome to join the team. There are actually several schools in our conference do this. I have a letter that I sent out the last two years, you know, hey, come to practice for sure. Playing time isn't guaranteed, but we try to look at how do we increase those numbers? So that starts January. Wrestling, again, they're, they're kind of that same timeframe as girls' basketball, January, February. So some of the concerns of, of athletics is just that declining participation. And then another piece that, you know, I have to do a fair bit of research, but over the last few years, slight decline here of the three-sport athlete. And a lot of this, if you ask the kids, they're good kids, they're working hard in something, not playing a sport for the school at that point, but many of them, it's specialization. They see a competitor from another school that doesn't play that sport, whatever it is. And while they're in the gym doing that, or they're in the batting cage, or they're whatever. And so I think that's one of the biggest draws. Schools under two hundred, it's, it's a problem because at some point, you know, you're not offering a CT, you're not offering a JV. Mondovi girls does not have a JV girls' basketball team this year. So that, that causes issues. Our football team, we were right on the verge of a JV team. We had a couple of injuries and a couple of issues and we've lost a couple of JV games too, so. I'd like to encourage coaches to encourage their athletes, hey, make sure the next sports season you're participating. But again, it's tough to draw someone that's really dedicated to this sport to use their time for a different sport. So just got to keep on working through that. Some spring athletic information, Josh Klinger and a lot of volunteers have been putting a lot of effort into our baseball field. You know, from, some of you might remember, I was a coach for baseball a number of years ago. From, from then till now, that baseball field, people would recognize it. It is so, so improved. So thankful to everyone that's working on that. Softball too, you know, again, we're looking way ahead in the spring. But yeah, a lot of, a lot of work has gone and I think Josh has been a big part of that. Tracking golf already, talking spring too. But we have people that are interested in being volunteers. And I do have, I guess I didn't point out, for the older positions, I think I've got coaches that have talked with me about filling all vacant positions. So I feel pretty good about that. So got to go through the interview process and hopefully December board meeting, we'll have a couple of those. Sportsmanship, we did again achieve the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five sportsmanship award. I don't know, you know, if you're very familiar with it, but at every event, every event. I don't know, you know, if you're very familiar with it, but at every event, every event. Suppose except for maybe cross country. And track maybe. Fans, coaches, players are evaluated by officials. It used to be a hard, now it's down online. And then opposing, so the coaches also rate opposing schools. And so there's a big, you know, database. And this was Glenwood City score last year. When it was averaged together, our total was a, a score of one point three eight many years ago. I don't know how many years ago that Don St. Croix looked at data and said, if your school earns an average below or above, however you want to look at it, of one point four zero nine, you are a sportsmanship award winner. And we achieved that again, so we'll add to our banner down there. Last year, we actually had to get another banner because we've got two full banners, so that's fun. That does lead me into a little area of concern this fall. I had more communication with officials and supervisors of other schools. We did have a couple of fan, no player, but a couple of fan issues. I did speak with both of the individuals that were described. And both conversations, I think that point is crossed because I had no other issues after that. You know, those are not fun conversations to have. People are very passionate about athletics and especially when their children are involved. So had what I think were positive interactions and maybe better sportsmanship after that. So. Surveys, so we have, the last two years, we've talked a lot about this, end of season surveys. Last year, we did not get to this early enough. It went out as an end of the year survey for all sports. And you saw the, the raw data, it was quite unwieldy. A lot of information there, valuable information. But, you know, trying to remember back nine months ago, did I like practice or not? You know, that's not always easy. But I spent a fair bit of time looking at that, both for the athletes and the parents. This year, we sent a parent and athlete survey right after the fall seasons all concluded. We just closed it. I got the information from Mr. Olson in email. I have not had a chance to look at it yet. Mr. Marge, Mr. Olson, I will be looking through that. We also have a self evaluation that coaches, head coaches fill out. And then I fill out a very similar one as well, almost identical, same questions. What I've done with that in the past is places where I maybe see something different. I talk to the coaches to see where that difference of opinion comes in. The ideal goal, especially as we, you know, kind of set an average for what, what should a rating be zero or one to five from athletes, from parents, you know, what, what are the norms that we're looking at there? What, what's a good season, what's a less good season? And then taking the, those scores and the comments and then, you know, sitting down and actually talking through a little bit more with the coaches than what I've done in the past with just our evaluations. When I've asked the last two years, other Don St. Croixes, a lot of schools did this in the early two thousands, but have gone away from it because in their opinions, it looks, it, it feels like just a opportunity to rant. But the way that I look at it as, you know, if I can take a summary and say, you know, here's, here's the positives, here's the consistent issues, hey, maybe we could improve this thing, you know, whatever those are. You know, if, if one upset parent says a random comment, I don't know if that's valid. But if, if seven out of twenty three say it, well, there's something there. So yeah, that's that on the raise. Other information, I wish I had wrote, wrote this later than I did. We've been very successful in finding officials. I shouldn't have written that, I guess, because last week, end of the week, I had three different basketball officials tell me that they've been asked to join varsity crews now. And so will not be able to do JV for us in basketball. So I'm officiating tomorrow night, so I already apologize to Bo Brandt. But it's, it's a shortage. It's something that we have to figure out because it's, it's not looking like it's getting better. At our Don St. Croix meeting so far this year, it's been brought up. And then at our last meeting, it was said, we're probably going to, each team is going to be given a choice. Are you going to host a Thursday night varsity football game or a Saturday varsity football game? Because the Don St. Croix is struggling to find officials. So these things are coming and.
That's the reason for.
Shortage of officials.
Okay.
Yep, that's the only reason.
Okay.
So we talked, there was three superintendents, three athletic directors and three principals. And we met and went through our constitution for the first time in twenty plus years. And I was vars, I was one of the suits. And after part of that discussion was an understanding of how many crews are actually going to be retiring. And so we even brought it up at our season meeting to say, you're going to have to make a choice because the Friday nights, they're, they're officiating. And if we can double them up and have, so they would agree, they can say, yep, I'd do a Saturday or I'd do a Thursday. Again, because we want to try to get ahead of this. So yeah, that is one of the main pieces of why we would be looking at a Thursday, Fri- or Saturday game is because the officials just don't exist.
The, the problem with that too is a lot of our varsity football officials are also varsity volleyball officials, which are Thursdays and Saturdays quite often. So it's, it's, that will help, that would definitely help. But yeah, there's, there's quite a few crews that you've seen in the area that within the next three years will not be officiating varsity sports. So. I've thought and thought and thought and over the last couple of years, I've tried, you know, how to, how to get our athletes as they leave, as they graduate, how do I get them, how do I retain them? You know, I've had a few that have, but of course, then they go on and, you know, get significant others and maybe go off to college or whatever. But that's always something I'm thinking of. I actually saw a young man here, graduated last year, basketball player, and I said, hey, what are you doing? He's at Stout, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep on that. So, but we may, we may have to talk. We pay seventy dollars for pretty much all lower level officiating, which I started officiating as forty five dollars. That wasn't that long ago. I think that's a lot of money, but, but people, again, when, when Allen and Crowe's can get a hundred and ten dollars for varsity, you know, so I know some other ADs in the area are paying ninety for JV now. And we, we just, we might have to talk about it more. So just to be aware. Workers, we've got some of the same people that, that work a lot of events. And I'm afraid for when they retire or want their nights. So trying to recruit more workers, we do pay actually better than most school districts in Don St. Croix for our workers. So it's not bad. I mean, the connections with students, it's amazing. I've told people that, I don't know if they believe me, but I've had people come back to me later and say, yeah, especially middle school. I worked that game and the next day, the middle school boy comes in and is a different kid because, hey, you were at my game, you cared about me. I'll care about you a little bit now too. So that's a huge piece. I wish more people believed me. But great connections with the community too, you know, when, when they see people work in those games. So I already mentioned the, the baseball field, so a lot of people have footwork for that. Trying to go quick and be brief, but if you have any questions, I would certainly like to entertain them.
A few years ago, we talked about really low middle school numbers and then they kind of, wrestling numbers in middle school. And then they kind of rebounded.
Yep.
And we had to get a volunteer, were you still strong?
This year.
Okay.
Yeah, this year we're probably a little bit down cycle again. We'll, we'll probably be fine with just one coach. If you mind scrolling back up, we do have Carson, I believe, and Austin. Austin, you know, family and everything, but we're hoping to pull back in as a volunteer at least. He's, he's, he's said that he will help some to Shane, but let's see.
He's at his house now, isn't he? So he should have funnier times.
But yeah, he's, he's excellent, excellent.
Do they all, are they all up there together?
The high school team? So we actually just, just started having a few of the high school kids coming down into the commons now as well. Twenty five or more athletes fills that wrestling room up. So they've expanded a little bit. That works really well right now. You know, when middle school wrestling begins, so January and February, you know, we can probably do it where, you know, here's some high school kids, here's some middle school kids, that would probably be fine. I, I don't know the middle school numbers, but Shane predicts it to be a little bit lower than it was last year.
Do we still offer dual sport to athletes?
We do. We've had more middle school participation with that this year. We actually had, I think, three athletes that took advantage of that. Cross country and volleyball. I think we're two of them. Yeah. And then did we have a football and cross country? But yes, yep. The last couple of years, high school wise, we've had far fewer. I think we had a little bit of a negative taste. Kids in dual sport, it starts with them. They really have to show their teammates on both teams and their coaches that they're in. And so if I'm the athlete and I leave this sport and I'm supposed to get over to that sport real quick and I don't, people on both sides start to get a little bit, you know, there's hard feelings. And then coaches give a bad taste to them. So we have had maybe a little bit of sour taste the last couple of years, but it's still there for students that have a two point seven GPA or higher. I believe it is, there's some, there's some criteria involved. Middle school, we've been a little bit more flexible with, okay, let's make a calendar. High school, we were a little bit more rigid with primary sport is always first, just for fairness. But with middle school, we want everyone to try because you never know what they're going to, what's going to hit and they're going to like and advance and so.
Do other schools in our conference, do they do the same thing?
Yeah. Yeah, Boydsville has several kids in dual sport. There are, Spring Valley has a couple of kids. I guess I can't think of, but yes, they do. I don't know how many with some of the other schools.
Hey, so there was going to be a shortage ahead of officials, I didn't realize you meant tomorrow, but.
Yes, yes, unfortunately tomorrow.
The, so it sounds like for the, for the fall sports, some of that surveys of the coaches and everything else still need to be assembled and maybe understood.
Yeah, I truly saw the email, clicked on the email, opened and just, I, I looked because I wanted to see, did we have a lot of kids fill it out? Did we have a lot of parents fill it out? Looks is all we did.
Okay.
And that's, that I was getting ready to come up.
I just closed it today and I put together the raw data throughout the day today. So as Mr. Score alluded to, we are still in the evaluation process of fall sports and coaches using that raw data plus others. We've actually already met a couple of times based on some concerns that have been brought to us. We wanted to make sure that we had all the data in front of us before we made some recommendations to the board. So more information will be coming, especially with that data so that we can put it in some usable form.
Perfect. And then we'll be doing that after each.
Yes.
Winter, spring.
Yep, absolutely. The, that was the challenge to try and make it, you know, brief enough that it's not your fill out book, but also, you know, open enough that people could share their thoughts for all of our fall sports, all of our winter, all of our spring sports.
I, I have a question about sportsmanship. I, I don't know about other sports, but I was at like volleyball and I hear like if a girl hits it into the net, they chant, this ain't FIFA.
Yep.
Now, to me, that violates the, the Don St. Croix's kind of thing. I mean, it's, it's not supporting in a positive manner.
Yep.
But we do it, Boydsville does it. I mean, it's, it's, it's what they do and they all have fun. I'm glad the, their classmates are all there cheering for them. Does, am I wrong? Is that, is the, where is there a fine line? Is it, is it, because I'm not going to go over there and tell them to stop saying that. I might, I might say that they should, but I mean.
The, this, this ain't FIFA.
Yeah, it's not soccer.
Kick the ball into the net.
Yeah, they say, and they have a few of them and they're funny.
Yeah, there's a lot. I have a couple of that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then you can't do that.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
It drives me nuts.
So Chuck, your, your old beat, a candle burns that.
Yeah.
And, and almost every, and you mean, we, we take, we should just set aside time for this.
Yeah.
Because yeah, what is acceptable and what is not. Obviously calling out a player by name, number, or holding up a sign negatively. Those are clear, wrong. You know, Jen, this ain't FIFA, well, you're not saying, hey, you hit it into the net, but.
Yeah.
You know that.
We have to say universal for everyone.
It's just like the, I shoot, and this happened a lot to me, I shoot and the Cubs are chanting airball for it.
Yeah.
But.
And that's where I struggle. Because, you know, there is that understanding of you can't say anything for a volleyball serve. And I said, well, gosh, I want that for basketball.
You can.
When, when my guys are shooting free throws, there's no, is that realistic? Absolutely not. And I would say to an athlete, buck up. You know, you're going to get, you know, so there is a clear line in terms of what is addictive and targeted. And then there's also of playful sports and just, you know what, you got to get tough, some tougher skin. And is it written down? I mean, every school is, so for me, when I'm supervising, it's like, yep, it's.
Yeah, but just because every school does it, doesn't mean it's right.
Agreed. I, I do have to say though, the NFHS, you can cheer during the serve, but you cannot have a crescendo. Matt Lamb would be proud, not crescendo to the serve. So, you know.
Okay. No, that's fine, just cleared it up perfectly.
When you take girls' officiating classes, they'll give you.
Yes.
I can't do that. So my other question would be, I know I've seen you standing over there by the student section. Are, are you, or are other schools, they've got somebody there that's like, you know, you'll be like, get that whistle out of here or that boom box or something, just.
You were at that game.
So you have some, if you can be in charge of that to just kind of keep them in line or the supervisor?
The supervisor, that's, so the officials do have the ability. And should, and the, the problem of course is if an official says, hey, you, you're out, then athletes, a lot of the fans are athletes, they're going to miss the next event. I don't want that to happen. So if our, so if our supervisors can take away the speaker or, you know, whatever, artificial noise is not permitted, then yeah.
You can be ahead of it before I guess an official.
Every, every school does have a supervisor at middle school and bar. Every, every school does have a supervisor at middle school and bar to events. The problem is, yeah, what's, where's the line? You know, where's that gray line? Is this appropriate?
Well, I would say here at Glenwood City, I would like that to be, uh, uh, a bar that is better than other schools. That's where I stand now.
I appreciate that.
If, if that makes sense.
Yep.
I want to be better.
Yep.
Yeah, that's kind of one of my questions around like the one point four. How many of these districts actually do get the sportsmanship award? Like, is it a high bar or is kind of everybody making it into a bowl game?
So that's a great question, actually. So, uh, if you look, um, I would say over the last three years, there are probably only about one school a year that doesn't. Uh, this year, every single school with Dun Saint Croix achieved, well, I should say last year.
Yeah.
Every school that wasn't the Dun Saint Croix last year achieved this.
Sure.
Uh, the year before, I believe two did not. Um, now, we talked about that though, because, um, when, when we have got to look at some of the data. The, uh, the games that have the lowest scores for one of the teams are typically non-conference. The Dun Saint Croix has had the sportsmanship summit. I believe this was the twenty-fifth year for it. Where were our athletes? We, we try to pick, you know, future leaders, juniors, maybe a couple of sophomores. Um, they gather, it used to be at Elk Mountain, this year it's at Colfax. Um, we take two coaches. I typically go, I was gone this year. Um, and we spend the day talking about sportsmanship. Um, our schools, I do think the Dun Saint Croix owns itself to a higher standard than, than maybe of the area conferences. But to that point, you know, could be better. But then also the other side of that, um, is what is appropriate and what is not. Having fun versus shaming someone, I mean, it's, it's tough. And when our kids watch collegiate, which is different, or NFL, or, you know, professional sports. You know, they're, the antics that are being done there, man, that looks fun. But again, some of them are definitely not appropriate here. So yeah, it's a, it's a gray area. Every school's a little different.
Um, I will say that the bar is higher than the Dun Saint Croix because Elk Mountain, the superintendent still attends our meetings and they are now in the Cloverbelt.
Yeah.
And he has made comments in the last two meetings, he couldn't believe the behavior of Cloverbelt, um, teams coming to Elk Mountain. And he just was like, it was so refreshing in the Dun Saint Croix, like all the eighties principals, superintendents, they all had this consistent expectation. And to now be in a new conference, we're not seeing that. So I think that speaks, you know, Eric has been at Elk Mountain for a while as a superintendent and to hear that, um, speaks highly of our conference and some of the expectations.
Thanks for adding the sixth graders to the no school ball.
Yeah.
That was great.
Yeah.
All right.
But you get to keep talking, right?
What's that?
You get to keep talking.
Oh, I'm gonna pass the torch right over to Shane.
It's got your name on it too.
I know, I don't know why it's on top.
Preston's been standing out here for an hour. He can't get into his classroom.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh man.
Hey. Do you have a master team on you?
Is he, can you press this? Go on my desk and my keys are there. Go ahead and just, those two keys.
This is top screen?
You just have to nod at me and say.
Especially when I smudge it first.
So I guess I'm, uh, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Aman process and how to applying to get into Aman football. We talked about this in the fall of two thousand twenty-two, would just give you some information on how this process works. Um, you apply on even years. So if we were to decide to apply, we'd apply in the fall of twenty-six and then you would be in in the fall of twenty-eight. Um, so that's why we're talking about it a year in advance, if we were to decide to go in that direction. Um, when we talked about this, we talked about our future enrollment, the program numbers and our junior varsity opportunities. Um, I'll briefly talk about those things as we go along through the presentation. And then playing varsity athletes or playing athletes at the varsity level before they're ready to play, especially in a combat sport like football. Um, violent collisions and our fewer added games this year, our line average of a hundred and forty-five pounds. Um, I thought we did fairly well for the kids that we had. They played really hard. Um, and then we have, uh, we've had other conference schools considering going to Aman. Both Turtle Lake and Clear Lake applied last year, so they're, they're going out. Chip, I mean, Chip Juan McDonald is, uh, coming in along with Toscueee Fairchild. Um, and now EPC is also talking about applying in twenty-six or twenty-eight, so it's growing.
Colfax is also lightly discussed that they've got one other slight issue with their enrollment is a little bit higher.
So to be playoff eligible, you'd have to be less than two hundred on a three-year average. So if your three-year average is below two hundred and you hit two hundred, you're still eligible. Um, and Colfax is, is a little, just a little bit over two hundred. So if they were to try to jump in, they would not be playoff eligible. They could play Aman, but they wouldn't be able to play the playoffs. Okay, our current status, we had thirty-three kids out for football, which we're typically between thirty-five and forty. Um, we've had a couple of years since I've been here where we've been around forty-five. It's pretty rare. Um, in fact, the state teams were only in the low thirties, so it's not much different. Um, our current classification is division seven with our a hundred and eighty-seven enrollment. Um, and I explained already with the, uh, early eligibility, our earliest eligibility would be the fall of two thousand twenty-eight. And we're gonna show some projected enrollment numbers here for our future, um, to help you through that decision process. And our average class size is, uh, pre-K through fifth grade currently are forty-one. Um, and based on this data, there's going, we're gonna get to a point where we're dropping into the one sixties. So we would be, we're, we're actually currently eligible right now to play Aman football. Um, one thing I wanted to point out, um, I'm from southeast Minnesota and in Minnesota they play nine man when they reduce. Um, my high school was eligible for nine man for over twenty years before the, they, uh, swallowed their pride and went for nine man football. Um, and it would, it made a significant difference. Um, they were, uh, they were Elmwood playing Elk Mountain pretty much every Friday when I was growing up as a kid. We could compete. Um, but to, to sustain that throughout the course of an entire season was very difficult. And no, they're very competitive and have a couple of state championships because of it. Um, I talked a little bit about Turtle Lake, Clear Lake, EPC. Um, biggest thing is safety. Uh, when our ninth and tenth graders can stay at the JV level, level, that's great. Cause they can develop with their age group. Um, this would provide us with that opportunity, skill development. Um, if we can split our practices up is a, is a big thing too. And it's more can, more competitive and the more competitive you are, the more success you have, more kids that want to be a part of that.
Uh, just to add to that, um, I was looking at the numbers. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, there were forty, uh, eight-player football teams in Wisconsin. Uh, two thousand twenty-one, there were fifty teams. Two thousand twenty-three, there were fifty-six teams and this year in two thousand twenty-five, there were seventy-two teams. So eight players growing as other schools face some of the same challenges that we have faced.
And all the classifications go, when, when a team drops to Aman, that pulls a D-six team down into D-seven. So that's just, that's gonna, that gap, we'll spread that gap out.
We'll talk a little bit more about that, but yeah, football is the only sport that we have that you don't know for sure, uh, when you start the season, what division you're in. Uh, we know with our enrollment, but, um, if you're a bubble team like we used to be, um, you might get to the playoffs. They take the teams that qualify and then they, then they by enrollment make, uh, make the division.
That changed this year. This is the first year that they, you know your classification before the season starts.
Yep.
Um, so they won't do, you won't, we'll be D-seven next year for sure. But then when they reclassify after the twenty-six, when they find out what teams are going, plus the performance factor.
Yeah.
Um, plays a role in that too. So we have, uh, current ra- our records, um, for Glenwood City football since two thousand and two. Um, it's one of a few sports in our school district since I've been here that has a winning record. So we have been competitive, um, over the years and you do have to, uh, qualify and make the playoffs in football. It's the only sport, um, that you have to do that. And I think we've qualified ten times since I've been here. So we have had some success. Um, you can see that we've had some down years too. Um, which is small school football, that'll happen. Um, our kids were very competitive this year, um, with, um, despite our size. We lost two games this year on the last drive of the game and that's eight wins. It's just, just a difference, but, uh, very proud of them and how they played this season. Here are the enrollment projections. So this year we were one eighty-seven, I believe, for our classification. And next year, one eighty-eight, so very similar. Then you can see we, we start to trend down a little bit. We have a jump here. I'm assuming that's our fourth grade. Our fourth grade is pretty big, isn't it Jamie? Um, so that's probably why that goes up a little bit with a graduating class.
Um, sorry, when I put this together, I just took the current um, numbers that are in your elementary, so please know that that can change based on people coming in, people going out.
But the likelihood that we exceed that two hundred threshold consecutive years is probably pretty low, right?
Seemingly, yeah. Um, I took, I took these numbers and I took this year's division seven, um, enrollment. Uh, so there were fifty-two teams in division seven. Uh, enrollment of division seven teams, performance factor did play a role in this. Um, there were a hundred and one was the smallest school enrollment to two hundred and twenty. Um, all of those teams, we were twenty-third, right in the middle. Um, but as we go here, uh, we would be again twenty-third using this year's number. So don't know what other schools are doing. The twenty-third, thirty-first, uh, thirty-fourth for these two years. Uh, thirty-eighth, thirty-third, thirty-sixth. So, um, and then as other schools, as Shane had said, as other schools, like Clear Lake and EPC that have already made the switch. As they go, those schools that are smaller than us are gonna drop away, pulling down those division six schools. So, you know, we, we're definitely gonna be a, a little fish.
So I talked about this in the beginning. So the application process, the deadline is October first of next fall. Um, and then we would be eligible in the fall of two thousand twenty-eight. If we choose not to apply in twenty-six, we cannot apply until twenty-eight to be eligible in two thousand thirty.
Couple of things that I wanted to add. So, um, I've been through this process, uh, before Aman was, uh, a thing. Um, it was actually one of my first years in Prairie Farm. And Prairie Farm actually went through Coach Anistad, the inaugural so-called state titles. Um, when I left Glenwood years ago and went up there as the principal, um, there was fifteen kids playing football. And after we moved, which took a lot of, I would say is almost like a referendum. You actually had to talk the community into this because there was just those hardcore, absolutely not, and so on. Uh, you may ask, why, why Aman? Well, Minnesota has had nine men for many, many years. And, uh, for as long, I mean, I've been out of school for however long and nine man has always been available. Um, of course, WA can't be the same as Minnesota, so they changed it to eight men.
Wisconsin did have eight men back years ago. Prairie Farm, I know people that played eight-player football for, uh, Prairie Farm back in the sixties. They were good, or so they tell you.
But two years after going to Aman, uh, the roster in Prairie Farm was in the upper twenties. And to Shane's point, um, in this presentation, if you're a freshman or a sophomore, you do not want to go against some of these men that are junior seniors and get the crap kicked out of you. So I think it's something that you have to look at. Um, McDonald, I, I don't, I mean, they won the Aman championship this year. I think they're an anomaly because they're coming back to eleven man, um, plus they're a private school. So I, I think that's beside the point, but the number of schools that are considering this, based on a lot of factors. Um, but I think in my experiences, that was probably the biggest reason was again, if you can keep students or players, uh, or student athletes playing against some similar. Um, if you look at, you know, are these records and the enrollment, you know, from two thousand two to two thousand twenty-five, I mean, we've lost a hundred kids in our high school. And so when you look at that and, and the last two years, you know, it's the, the double digit wins. Um, is the first time for a while, but from a standpoint of the competitiveness and the numbers, they're there. But I think some of that's gonna just diminish too, because you're gonna see enrollment not only drop. Um, but every high school goes through these highs and lows. Um, and I think, um, it was interesting because Coach Strong talked to me, you know, um, earlier when I was here coaching, that they were gonna present to the board or talk about it and it wasn't necessarily, um, moving forward with. Um, again, you have the old timers, I don't want to go. And we had to be a love man, cause I was a love man. I really think you have to look at the safety factor that's established here. Because what you're gonna do is you're gonna get to the point of what Prairie Farm was in terms of kids just aren't gonna want to go out. And I think, uh, Coach Strong is, has kept consistent numbers as far as participants. Um, those are things, we're not asking you for a decision tonight. Um, because we do have some time, but the presentation's important for you to understand, like, why? Why is this even being considered and what goes into that? Um, the number of teams that have moved to Aman, um, it's becoming more and more popular just from a standpoint, uh, throughout the whole. And I think Shane isn't, aren't, they're looking to put eight man, cause right now they don't play on the Thursday, Friday at Camp Randall. Aren't they looking, from what I heard, they're trying to infuse that somehow where that final game can take place. Cause for so long, it was at DC Everest and then this year, I don't even know where it was.
I think it was at Wisconsin Rapids.
Rapids, yeah. So DC Everest all the time, just cause Prairie Farm made it a number of years. But, um, they're trying, the conversation is, as this grows, you know, get that team to play down at Matt or at, uh, Camp Randall, just like the other groups.
There's also been, you know, low level discussions, so not anything for sure. But discussions of as a eight-player continues to grow, do they create a second division? Uh, does eleven-player eventually drop to division seven? You know, and if, if those things, especially dropping to division seven, that would be a very, uh, that would be detrimental for, for us, for our kids.
Um, I mean, I think WA has already gone down that path. Like boys' basketball, we are in division four this year for basketball. Our girls are in division five and that's the success factor. Um, that has affected that. And then there was a tie. We were actually part of the tie. We got moved down. So what that tells me is, is that at any point, that's what they're going to do because WA wants to put all finals at the same. They just moved wrestling down to lacrosse, uh, because of the venue. Um, football has been the same, you know, you get those people that constantly say, well, why? It's to stay championship wise and not with the rest. So I, I, I believe that at some point, there is gonna be a change here, especially as more and more teams. Just Shane mentioned how many teams are out here considering that.
The Dun Saint Croix, the, the districts or district for football, it changes every two years anywhere, it can change. But it, it's gonna continue to change as a couple of other schools look at it for sure.
I said it was kind of like a referendum, right? Where like the whole community talks about it, but it's, it's to the point where like a lot of our districts locally, I mean. I don't wanna say what Boydsville does, if we do it, but I mean, to kind of maintain. I don't wanna say well, Boise does, if we do it, but I mean, to kind of maintain that camaraderie with our local districts, right? It would be nice if we all were together.
I've, I've had a number of texts with uh, EPCs, uh, AD, and you know, that's kind of the thought, it's like, well, when are you presenting? When are you presenting? You know, yeah, together.
And that's two schools.
Yes.
EPC is two schools. So I think, again, you will often see high schools, athletics, you know, there's just those valleys and the peaks, and it just goes up and down based on who you have go out for your teams. But at some point, yeah, football's a different beast because of the physicality of it.
Is the field the same size?
No.
No.
It's, it's a little smaller, right?
Narrow.
Do we need to do anything to our facility that is?
We wouldn't have to change anything with our facility, just, you can leave it a hundred-yard field or you can go to eighty.
Okay.
Um, but you do have to narrow it, which you just paint the lines.
You just paint the lines at the response.
Okay.
What was the reason we didn't change in twenty twenty-two, where it was discussed?
Um, do you want me to say?
Yeah, not, not me, yeah, I.
Um, Mr. Johnson wasn't for it for one, but it was us going backwards was one of the comments. And then we did have a board member that was critical of it. To be honest with you, it was just an informational thing, and the only board member I felt like was talking about and asking me questions was Jock. And I, when I walked out of there, I thought, well, Jock played on the ninety-seven state championship team, and he's talking about, I thought you'd be the one who was prideful of no way, and, and it wasn't, so, yeah.
I, I think the, the piece, like, like a referendum is community support. You know, I remember at that point, I, I was coaching, and there were, there were people on the coaching staff that, you know, ah, this is, yeah, a step back.
We weren't even sure as no, if it was the right decision. I mean, we love eleven-man football, but we care about Glenwood more than eleven-man football. You know, what, what is better, better for kids? We actually, there, I don't wanna throw one to the bus, but we have a le- football legend here from Glenwood City that's been coaching a little bit with us, who was not for this a few years ago, and my recent talks with him, he's all for it. So which, which is a good sign that there's some support there.
I, I also, if I recall, in twenty twenty-two, the dominoes hadn't started falling yet.
Yeah.
With coldbacks and EPC. You know, it was, so it was like, we were talking about maybe having to go and play really far away. Um, that's not the case anymore, you know?
Yeah, you know, and then another piece, you know, for me is, we, we talked almost a couple of times a week. How are we looking for JV? Are we, you know, are we good? You know, I mean, had some key injuries at key positions. Um, if you run out of quarterbacks, it's tough to play football.
We're teaching a kid how to play a line in, in one night for a JV game for, it's hard.
So when you're putting fourteen-year-old boys against eighteen-year-old men on a Friday night, some bad things can happen, and.
I wanna say from experience, that my son played as a sophomore against, we probably don't all know who he is, but Leo Chanel, who plays for the Kansas City Chiefs right now. Um, and he played football against him and he played basketball against him. And in both of those games, Tanner was very upset, he's like, I don't know, I, I can't compete with that dad. You know, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's debilitating as parents, debilitating as an athlete. And if we can keep those kids within their own ranges, that would be, to me, would be awesome.
So for those of you that don't know, so from an eight, eleven-man to an eight-man, it's one less lineman, one less running back. And then it typically, it's like a, an end or something, receiver. So, you know, you still have the same concept, and again, Minnesota has had nine-man for year after year after year. Um, did you come from that area to Houston or something?
Yeah, they, uh, we were eligible for nine-man all the way when I was in high school. They didn't go to nine-man till seven years after I graduated. And they've been stayed a few times since then, and competitive every year.
And there's no, there's nothing statistical that says that it doesn't prepare an athlete to, to go on and take the next step, so to speak. I mean, you're playing football, the concepts are the same, positions are the same, fewer, but no, it, there's, there's guys in the NFL that.
Tucker Kraft.
Tucker Kraft, exactly. Um, Jack Greenway's one of the best, I mean, is he?
Nine-man.
Cause there are some schools like Montana that play even fewer, but.
My son played with two kids from Locke that started us out, and we're all Wyatt, all conference from eight-man schools, so. If he can play, they'll find you.
Yeah, so I think this is a really good starting point to have discussions and see where we go. We have, you know, ten months.
Uh, one thing I wanna say about that though is.
Yeah.
If we decided to do this, I would like our junior high to go to eight-man next year. And so if we can give Jake time to put together a schedule, that would, EPC would be easy, because I think they would say, yeah, no problem, we'll play, we'll play you. But the more time we have to pick up those games, the better, you know?
And I don't think this, again, there's not a decision tonight, but um, between the coaches, the AD and myself, you know, we all recommend making this move for the twenty-six. Um, the, you know, the waiting time alone, you know, again, we wanna get ahead of this stuff. So uh, this will be a vote that comes to you, but we want to have the conversation, uh, we were gonna have it in October, uh, but then some things happened. Um, but again, I would agree sooner rather than later, within the next couple of months to make a final decision, so we can prepare appropriately.
So, on one hand, I mean, this looks, I mean, it looks like it could be promising for us, but also, I mean, we're always trying to look at how we can increase our enrollment. So what happens if our enrollment goes over while you're an eight-man team? You, you have to.
Well, I think you'd be in the same boat as like McDonald, so there's always flexibility to go back. So McDonald was eight-man for, what, two years, three years?
I think two cycles.
Two cycle forty years, and now.
So they don't make to go back to eleven?
No, no, you choose to, but if you go above the three-year average.
Yeah.
So we would have to be two hundred or higher for three years in order to go above that average. Or you would have to put three M in down the column here and have six hundred employees move it down.
But that's, but that is important, because it's a three-year attendant, you know, average enrollment. And it's every two years the cycle, so we would have time if we were to make this switch.
If we saw a projection of, well, we're, we're jumping up to two-ten during this stretch of time, we would have time to.
Yes.
Declare that we wanna go back to eleven.
So I mean, if you exceed that average, like worst case, you're just not playoff eligible for a season as you make the transition back.
And then that's a good point, cause on the flip side of that, there's been, there have been multiple schools that have waited and waited and waited. And then when they realize that we have sixteen kids out, we need to jump in, they jump in on that year. You could, we could play eight-man right now, but then we can't play in the playoffs if we don't go through the application process.
And you could do the same, the reverse too, if you're like, holy cow, now we've got kids born in everywhere. You could, again, go move, make the move to eleven-player, not be playoff eligible until the cycle. But again, with the three-year enrollment and the two-year cycle, you should always be able to stay ahead of that. Um, and then apply and move.
Well, and, and this year, we had to cancel the JV game, you know, we had some injuries. Um, and you do get to that point, so in terms of enrollment and opportunities and so on, yeah, those things are gonna always happen. Um, but again, I think it's fair to say, you know, especially with the legislator coming out and incentivizing schools to consolidate, you know, there's just less population of students within the state of Wisconsin. Our enrollment shows the same trajectory. Clear Lake is gonna be under one sixty, uh, one fifty in the next year. So again, the likelihood of getting to that point, based on our data too, it's not gonna happen. Unless three-M does come in our backyard, which is unlikely. Does anybody have any questions, since we have the head coach and the AD here? Does anybody have any concerns, any, you know, thoughts in terms of community, um, feedback? Um, are you okay with the information was presented and we just think about it, and then the vote comes in the next month or two? Um, or is there more steps that you would like to see taken?
I don't think we need to do four steps.
That, one of the reasons I made that comment about Prairie Farm is because it wasn't, it just, it didn't exist. And I think that's why people were put, there was no state tournament, there was no, there wasn't seventy-two teams in eight-man. Now, yeah, I mean, it's like common, so I, I don't think you're gonna have the same pushback, except you do get some of the local establishments where they're yip-yapping about the good old days. Um, so if you feel like more information is needed, we certainly can do that, but I don't know if that exists.
And, and just thinking, I don't know that our travel would be much different. I mean, it's really convenient, Boise and Spring Valley, but Clear Lake, you know, Turtle Lake, EPC, assuming they go this route, you know, you start building a conference, you know, of. Yeah, so if, we might be mileage time of travel.
Exactly.
Maybe, it's close though when you're eight minutes, you know?
Yeah, Chautauq and Chippewa, McDonald.
Right, yeah.
And that, that'll grow, because they place you with the closest, closest schools.
I, I feel like we're, we'll get out or get around, so you know, the people will know, we got money, we got time to make their opinions known.
With the, the December, we move it always because of the Christmas concert, so this would be likely voted Jan. Any other questions?
I'm assuming of the football parents that you know, they're, they'd be generally supportive of this?
Yeah, everyone that I've talked to, I'm sure.
I figured you wouldn't be bringing it forward unless you guys are supportive of the.
I'm sure that there will be some that are critical, which they have pride in Glenwood City and they love Glenwood City, so I understand that.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, man.
Great, Jamie, you have a presentation. Yes. Alright, so I had approached, um, Patrick a couple of weeks ago. Um, this is a need that I've definitely kind of been wanting to implement, initiate down at the elementary school, and then have it kind of carry over to our middle school, high school. Um, again, I wanna try to build that community connection within the school district. I know years ago, pre-COVID, there was a good partnership with community members coming in and that kind of thing. And then I kinda, once COVID hit, everybody kinda shut the doors, and then it was hard to kind of reopen back things up. So, kind of came up with this plan and ideas, we're talking about kids who need an additional adult in their life. Um, a lot of our kiddos are looking for those positive role models, that type of stuff. So I did put together a community mentor program, so outside adults, or even some of our high school kids who wanna get involved, um, down at the elementary school or vice versa. But this would be for four K through twelfth grade students, needing any extra encouragement, a connection. Um, it helps increase attendance, motivation, organizations, you can kind of read through this. Um, so I'm looking for anybody like in our local community, parents, guardians, retired staff, um, people, local businesses, employers, maybe if three-M comes in, some of their workers would like to come, um, and help with our kiddos. So what I have is, it has a volunteer application process, a background check that would be done through the district, and then I have a, um, like a mentor handbook that they would get. Um, this would all be done onsite on school grounds, um, for the safety of our students and our volunteers. We don't wanna put them in situations, um, super supervised, visible spaces. Um, really, I'll take whatever from volunteers, if they say I can come every couple of weeks, great. If it's weekly, whatever people are willing to give for time, um, would be awesome for that. Um, and then, um, what I have is like applications, volunteer applications for the mentors, and then I also have referral forms for staff, if they have kids, if they wanna refer. So like down at the elementary school, once we start having our next data meetings, we go over, um, behavior, we go over academics, we go over home life, different things that these kiddos, kiddos are going through, so that will also help us identify some of these kids. This is something, like I said, that I've also rolled out and welcomed the middle school, high school students, because we still have some of those kids that also need those connections. So, um, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
I would like to add that, I think, you know, when you look at the community connection, um, in my two years making concerted efforts to attend, uh, city council meetings, and uh, Jody is part of the, the group that was the former chamber, and just different things like that to get the community into our schools and form a better partnership. Uh, local business is the same thing. Um, so I think, you know, our, we look at the emergency units, whether it's fire, um, EMT, et cetera, making signs for them, making signs for the city, uh, this is just another step. Um, and Jamie did a, a great job of putting this together to where, um, if you saw the pictures of last Friday, which was, uh, the grandparents' day, uh, when you can fill up the new elementary, uh, gym, uh, with grandparents, um, those connections and helping kids, um, just feel some of those items. Um, it's never, it's always refreshing when you walk in, especially as a male, and you have these kids come up and just grab your, uh, leg, cause they just don't have that, um, type of person in their lives. Um, we actually just had the conversation with grandparents, too. We have a number of students and my kids were one of them, they don't have grandparents. And so I think that if there's any, uh, ever an opportunity to get kids connected, um, Jamie has done this with, uh, my son too, um, Brody as a senior. Uh, one of his hours is he spends it with some students that have some behavior issues as a reward. They spend some time together, and uh, there's just, again, this program, I think summarizes that connection and puts it out there to where we need you, we need more help. Um, because you, you hear it all the time, it takes a community to raise a child. And I think this speaks about you to that process, so kudos to Jamie for putting this together. And, um, we don't need any type of, uh, approval, it's just more of sharing it, and if there's any comments, concerns, um, or others, um, just wanted to.
Or anybody willing to take some papers with you, let's just give them somewhere, get them on the community.
That's what I was gonna ask, is, I mean, from a mentorship standpoint, have you gotten a lot of engagement, or?
I just. So this is really, I just finished it last week on Friday, um, and then it's launching on social media this week, so we have some posts went on social media this week, so it's just in the very early stages. I've had one person reply so far after last night's post, um, but like I said, just getting it out. So my thought is that I would like to get some things hung up around town and the businesses and that kind of stuff, to try to engage, you know, get some interest, so.
We had, uh, um, this type of program in New Richmond, and it was, the chamber really kind of blew it up, because if these local businesses have some incentive programs inside their companies to give back to the community. So, and you saw individuals like in New Richmond, it was the city administrator, and he was in our one building, uh, one time per month eating with, and he developed this close connection with one of our students that didn't have a father, and it was pretty neat when you see those. And I think we have a great community where they wanna give back, they just don't have the admin to do that. And I think this will open up some of those opportunities.
I assume somewhere in there, there's like some confidentiality method these mentor people need to sign? Like, I'm, I'm just thinking like, you know what I mean?
Well, it's.
In a small town.
So they won't be exposed to any of that incentive data, right? So they won't be exposed to testing data of any sorts, any sort of qualifications that these kids have as far as IEPs or special education.
Oh, I don't mean like that, I'm sorry, um, like if they wanna go around town, say they're mentoring kids. Um, like if they want to go around town, say they're mentoring kids, can they say their name openly that they're mentoring this kid?
So parents have to sign off, yeah. So the parent, parent have to have to sign off on permission of it. So parents are gonna know that. So if you look in.
I did see that part.
Yeah, the document part of it, so parents are signing off as far as like a.
I think you, Jordan, you run into situations where you have to have those meetings to say, hey, this is the situation.
Right.
Because you're, you're working with individuals that want to give back and you go sit on the side and say, hey, this is the situation, this needs to remain confidential. You know, there's a background check, there's some other pieces, you know, to that puzzle. And to your point, we are in a small community, so we'll be able to get a lot of information to say, yes, they're gonna be a good mentor or let's be careful with this one based on X, Y, Z.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, because.
Right, and I think too, like, you know, this talks about cultural sensitivity, respect. You may not share your beliefs, experiences and that kind of things with kids. But I also think too that when we match some of these kids, that, like I said, they're not gonna get the whole, hey, this is the kid's background. This is where they come from. It's, hey, this kid needs a positive role model, you know, this kid's looking for a connection. Again, you know, only if that necessary stuff. And then like some of our behavior kids who also have that, those would be the ones that are already on different behavior plans, already getting those things met through different things, so, but yeah.
Yeah, this is not targeted to the two percent that struggle nightly in class. This is open to anyone because we have so many kids with different stories, you know, whether it is lack of grandparent, lack of father, lack of mother, whatever the case may be. If we can provide a positive adult in their kids' lives, it's just one more opportunity to help that kid grow. Any questions on the program itself? Okay.
Everybody good? Sorry, compensation though.
Alright, well, we've been talking from a budget dairy standpoint and I included everything in there now. We did run out of time and it does come up a couple of times tonight where unfortunately we have quite a few things going on in many areas. With that, with staff compensation, the recommendation is in front of you, so hopefully you've been able to look at that. The overall, if I just look at this paragraph, there is a back trade, back pay process going into this year's annual budget, we didn't know a lot of moving parts. Now we do know those numbers, the budget is set for the next two years, including this one. And so I feel we're in a better position to make the best effort when it comes to compensation. I am recommending three percent for professional staff and four percent for support staff. So what does that mean? Three percent is, or professional staff are those individuals that have license or require a license that is reported to D B I through the twelve or two. Support staff is all those other individuals. The reason I came up with those two numbers for a couple of reasons. Number one, last year, the district, and I applaud the board for doing that, we found a compensation error where over thirteen individuals received less compensation, which is against state law. And the district spent over a hundred and sixty thousand to make that right. In terms of like support staff, in terms of comparables, there is more information that we need to have, which I would like to do this spring. And with that, this spring, I would like to look at the comp model itself, but also look at comparables in a more detailed manner. I think we can all agree that three percent and four percent does not, depends on where you look. C P I and where inflation is, I don't want to get political, but I'm going to in terms of the labor numbers that are or not there. Inflation is past the three percent. We use C P I, which those returning board members know that there was a classification of C P I, which is no longer part of the comp plan. But we need time to really look at that comp plan and see if it matches what the district would like to do in the future years. With that said, we needed to move on this for the sake of our staff. And so if you look at the recommendation, that includes steps and lanes, support staff increases, everything is outlined in that document, including bus drivers. And I like to put everything in one area similar to last year. So what we're asking or what I'm asking tonight is approve the recommendation unless there are changes that you see are need to be addressed, which again, I would open it up to next spring when you look at our comp plan, which the board, we talked about my first year, we were kind of looking at it in detail and said, well, some of these jumps just don't make a lot of sense. And there was more moving parts, especially the last two years. But other than that, wanted to outline the rationale behind the three and four percent recommendation. I guess I will also add, you know, when you look at our overall staff, we can't do what we do without our support staff and what they provide. And when you look at livable wages with some of these positions, especially with where things are at in our country, we gotta make sure that we take care of as many people as we can. We're still deficit spending, which is not a great situation, but in the same regard, we want to make sure that we can fill those positions when we've had some trouble filling some of these support staff positions. Any questions on the recommendation?
I've got a question on the, it's not necessarily related to the recommendation, but it might not even be a topic for tonight. But I would like to understand better how we determine on the extracurricular and co-curricular, how those percentages are determined for each of those roles? Is there a guide that is used for that or is that responsibility oriented that we come up with those?
Well, Derek, that is on my to-do list, which grows every week.
Okay.
This is what it was at.
Okay.
I actually have gone through that process in another district and it got down to where, how long the length of season? We've looked at every possible aspect, how many students, athletes do you typically have? Length of season, what are responsibilities in season, out of season, et cetera. I can't speak to what you're looking at, I don't know how those were formed. That is unfortunately how it was when I got here.
Sounds like it's a to-do, it makes sense, guys.
Yeah, I would agree with you that some of those are not aligned and they don't make sense compared to others.
Sure. The other comment I had on the bus driver section, there's a lot of caveats in there. And so anytime you get caveats, usually builds more caveats. And so any way that we could maybe simplify that would probably behoove us in the future.
I would agree.
Probably something.
Like when I took this position, knowing some of the, the details I know now, I made it a goal to not take anybody backwards in compensation. I was rather surprised because some of these caveats were simply known. And I said, well, where are they written down?
Nowhere.
Nowhere?
Yeah.
Well, they're just known. Well, it was the same with some of our policies, well, this is what we do. Where is it written down? Well, nowhere, it's right here. We don't operate it that way. So I have never seen a comprehensive list like this for a certain position, which means, you know, there's probably somebody that wrote it on a napkin downtown at one point. And I would wholeheartedly agree, like, you can't sit here and have something different for each situation that may arise. We have to have consistency. But again, for me, it was, okay, take these things that were practiced, put it on paper and then let's address it when we look at compensation as a whole.
Any other questions? So this is the recommendation, are you asking for approval?
I'm asking for approval so that we can do the back pay process started immediately, which would then be in time for the holiday season, well, the Christmas holiday season.
Right, is anybody inclined to make a motion to entertain the compensation recommendation as presented?
I would motion to approve the compensation recommendation as suggested.
Is there a second to that?
Second, no.
Second, thank Jordan. And any other thoughts or concerns?
Well, because I am who I am, I have to do this myself. But so there are people, right, that are, that are, that would benefit from this. So I'm wondering if we should abstain, have some people abstain from the voting itself.
Yeah, I remember hearing about that before, but I want to hear the truth.
Yeah, you know, you have a spouse in this group, you have to abstain.
Probably should abstain from that.
From this, now, this is one of the few that doesn't require, excuse me, let me back up. The budget itself is the one state statute that requires a two-thirds vote for here. It doesn't, it just has to pass from a quorum standpoint. Now, there is some gray area like we've talked about in terms of, because I think if I look at some of the relationships.
One, two, three.
Yeah, so you threw the mask, I think, oh, we have two of those.
And we would need.
Oh, I have a dog, I have two daughters too, right?
Yeah, so Jordy, Jordy, is that the Jordy that I?
No, I will, I will say, I remember hearing that it was something like over a certain percentage amount of your family's like income, you, you wouldn't have to abstain unless.
And I don't know, I would say from a safety standpoint, Chuck, you should abstain, Steve, you should abstain. Scott should be here and Jordan should abstain. I think you're gonna be fine in terms of smaller districts like this happens, you know. We have some that have five board members, you know, there's seven, there's nine. I would say the spouses certainly probably the, the main component here. I have not heard that, but I, that makes sense to me, I guess I've never looked that up.
I heard it from the last guy, so who knows?
Okay, so I'll second that, is that where we're going with this? The last man standing? What though?
I think I'm seconding, I don't know.
So Derek has, has made a motion, Jordan is rescinding his secondary motion.
Don't second that.
Second it now.
It will pass if three of us abstain and we have no problem, right?
Yes, okay, then.
What do you think?
All I'm saying.
Alright, let's do it this way, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no. And those that abstain?
All abstained, abstained.
So when I mark the three abstained and three yay, it says motion fails and board checks.
It says what?
Motion failed, it's a tie, when it's three and three, it's a tie, so it does not exist.
When, when the tie go to the chairman?
Tie goes to the winner.
I would say in this situation, I'm gonna take your, because here's, here's what I would really hate to see is the fact that we don't keep going on this process because of where it is. And I think from a standpoint of the overall compensation, if I look at whose salary is where, I think Jordan could probably approve or vote, excuse me, and then the other two abstain.
Also, the fact that it's a.
It's a standard.
It's, it's the, it's the whole, it's not specific individuals too.
Yeah, but his point is true, it's a, yeah, I don't know how much money you guys make exactly, but I'm, I'm assuming it's a smaller percentage.
Yeah, smaller percentage is, is what I would go from, especially or docs is telling us, because that software speaks to that. But again, I assumed Scott was gonna be here, so.
So we're counting Jordan's vote.
I would count Jordan's votes.
Jordan, how do you vote?
I vote aye, asterisk aye.
Allow me to do that? Never had this happen before.
Again, I think from a standpoint of, for, we understand what is at stake here, we understand and there's no objection to getting this rolling for the back pay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other ways we could exclude the spouses and then have a vote off just the spouses? But again, everybody's generally supportive, so.
Yeah, I mean, I favor that, I think everybody's all strongly, but.
Alright, are you good, 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 yeah, everybody's good?
Yeah.
Alright, motion passed, yep, alright.
Okay.
Transportation.
Transportation, I just wanted to follow up with my text message. We received two new buses on Thursday, which is our overall transportation. We have some, I have some bad luck, I don't know what I need to do to get some better, about four buses in literally four months. So I put together this summary and I wanted the board to be, kind of see where we're at. If you look at the overall, and again, I wanted this on paper. If you look at the very top, the ideal bus fleet for Glenwood City at this time is ten total, and that's with Christie, eight rows, one extracurricular, one spare. Unfortunately, we ran into somewhat of a lemon in one of the newer buses, the twenty-three. It's currently in Green Bay, it's covered under warranty, but they do have to replace the engine. The rest you can see, unfortunately, we ran into some situation where these four, we have three that are sold and then one that, bus-wise, if you look at bus eleven, there's quite a bit of fixes that we need to take place. And what I did was I talked to Ryan, I talked to Jerry, our new mechanic. We talked to Mike Autobots, who we're doing some more work with, and talked to Blaine Brothers. And it, it's pretty much consensus in terms of this bus is not worth fixing because of what you see to the right, the mileage, et cetera. Unfortunately, you do not get a lot of resale value when it comes to a bus. With the two new buses that we have, we have a solid fleet. There are some things that we're working through that Jerry is addressing. So I feel good in terms of what we have. We also, in terms of downsized plan, we do not need this XL wagon, which is a van, fifteen passenger van. We did use it for tiny toppers and some delivery pieces, but again, that's no longer needed. So Krista has posted it on social media. We did have somebody show interest today and we'll see where they come in. We did have somebody come and look at it. If you look at, Tim and I went through the other, the bottom section. Before I get there, we are having some pretty good success in terms of our Kia's staff, really like how they drive the Prius score. We've talked about the dump truck and the plow truck, knowing that we're again, gonna be in the same situation. So we tried to get ahead of that with our snow removal contract. But again, when we look at these buses, these should have been gone a while ago or sold. But thankfully, we were able to get that lease approved and then the buses, the turnaround was actually very quickly, are very quick in terms of getting them here. In terms of the bottom area, unfortunately, we have a glorified golf cart. Um, in terms of the bottom area, unfortunately, we have a glorified golf cart in this Bobcat. Uh, the PTO is no longer fixable. And uh I think it's a couple of things. Number one, uh just the general maintenance. Uh but number two, the PTO shaft was looked at by Hudson Bobcat and we're kind of perplexed that they can't replace this PTO.
I was going to say that.
Um, it was, it was weird because Tim talked to me specifically and said, no, we don't make that anymore and you no longer can do that. And why that is um a little hard to swallow is because there's quite a bit of equipment that was not used um by the previous individual. Um, but the mower, there's a broom, a snow plow, um that all need that PTO shaft. And so right now, we were having some uh power use or issues where it was having trouble just going up and incline. And so again, it's a pretty expensive piece of equipment, yet the attachments are now useless. And so there's further discussion on what we would like to do. I have Tim researching different options. The biggest, I think, uh use that we will need to address is the broom. Because when we have, you know, a dusting of snow, you know, you don't want to take a plow on top of your cement sidewalks, et cetera, and to come in with a broom, um it just is more efficient. So we're looking into a variety of things, but I think just like everything that we're looking at, um we have to have a consistent plan and look at what our old machines are, whether it's buses, our vehicles, um or the district grounds and maintenance equipment, and make sure that we are staying up to speed in terms of replacement or equipment that we use. So nothing you have to do. I just wanted to make sure that you actually saw all the pieces of equipment for our district. Is there any questions that anybody has? Okay, um, the next one is I put together after our summary and I do need some direction. I don't need approval, but I wanted to explain this. So based on our re- most recent work session, I categorized everything. Uh, Tim and I did have a chance to actually go through. And in the one document that's attached, I highlighted the things that we can do within our general maintenance um department. What I did was the prioritization that the board did at the work session, I put that into this table. Um, at the very bottom, you can see that the overall expenditure is about four hundred and five thousand. Um, based on talking with Mark and Johnson, talking with Wolf, you should add another twenty-five percent based on engineering, architecture, et cetera. So we're looking at about five hundred and six thousand of the prioritization that the board came up with at the work session. What I need some direction is, is we need to start having these conversations right now with uh Mark and Johnson or Wolf uh to move forward. So I wanted to explain the financial, um I would say outlets that would be available. So I'm just going to go down the list here. Fund ten, our fund balance is at twenty-nine percent or two point seven million. Or policy, as we've talked about, is twenty percent. So the difference there is roughly eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, which we talked about, uh and Derek did some of that math last time. Fund eighty, which we know has been an issue in terms of we can't use those funds except for certain things. That fund balance is at eight hundred and thirty-six thousand. Um, and again, can only be used for community type of expenditures. Fund thirty-eight, this is the one that you have the ability to borrow up to one million without going to a referendum. Um, as you know, this was utilized um in terms of um, I wanted to make sure that I had the summary, which I think I forgot. But we pay roughly sixty-seven thousand uh annually, which again is really small compared to where we're at. Uh, we have the ability to borrow, um so I should have had the final amount, which is roughly around six hundred thousand, uh six hundred and in terms of what remains, which was the football field and so forth. So I apologize for missing that number. Uh, fund thirty-nine is our bond referendum that was taken out in two thousand and sixteen. That is currently at five point or five million roughly. Um, typical payment for this bond is six hundred and fifty-five thousand. And as you know, based on our revenue cap sheet and could putting the uh levy to where you wanted it, uh we are making somewhat of a double payment uh to get that down. Fund forty-six is currently at four thousand. We left it there just to make sure that it's open. Um, this was rather disappointing, but I wanted to make sure that you were aware. There is discussion that the state, um you know, it would, they were touting the budget to have special reimbursement at a certain percentage was, which was in the thirties. Uh, they are now projecting that that's going to be seven percent less than what they projected. And that's a significant number. Um, I don't have the number in front of me in terms of what that was for us um because it's projected at this point. Um, so we'll see, this actually just started to come out. And so I uh included uh a link to a news article, uh because I wanted to find out more. Um, we talked about, you know, reasons of why we have uh deficit spending, we've talked about that. Uh, the audit recommendations were at these amounts in the next couple of years and just taking in fact that restitution is not accounted for in this budget. So I wanted to outline where the funding mechanisms um exist. And then you kind of give me the yay or nay that you want to go forward with this list to at least get numbers from Wolf and Parker and Johnson. The only thing that I added was we talked about this, which you're going to be asked to approve. We talked about this, uh the PA system. Uh, Jamie and Frank and I have been meeting um consistently on technology. I meet with Frank once a month anyway, uh but we're looking at from a standpoint of our Prometheans and our laptops. Uh, we are all over the place in terms of equipment and to Chuck's point earlier in the meeting, we have to make sure we give our staff the right resources. And unfortunately, we have a variety of staff that are still working from a desktop, which means they don't have flexibility to take it home, to continue. You cannot do this job in the eight to three, you know, three forty-five. It's just, it's not possible. And so one of the things that I added to our list is, if we can jump on this, and actually this quote, uh we just did this, this last year, we got half of our professional staff with laptops and this number came in more. They're actually cheaper than they were just a year ago. So um I'm just looking, again, I don't need formal approval, but does this list? Um, I just took what you guys had prioritized and then um we can talk later about these funding mechanisms. But obviously, there is some flexibility that is outlined above here to pay for that roughly five hundred thousand.
Do you think generally these go in order priority? Like we prioritize using fund ten, fund balance to draw that down? And then if we do have other extenuating budget circumstances, we would look at some of those other options?
Yeah, I didn't put these in any particular order. I simply went through and took what you guys.
The, the funding bucket option.
Oh, the bucket?
Yeah.
No, I did not put that in any order because it's, it's a little bit, it's confusing because there's definitely some mechanisms that, you know, tie in. Um, especially when you're looking at the fund eighty, fund balance of eighty thirty-six depends on some of these um projects. What could we pull out in terms of fund eighty? Um, I think it is comfortable saying that if you have the ability of eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Again, um we have not ran the budget for next year, but if we're deficit spending this year, um, we have to be careful, but still nine percent on the fund balance is some pretty good flexibility.
Then I think in the master list or whatever, did you and, oh, it's new Frank's name, Tim?
Yeah.
Kind of go through what we think we can do internally?
Absolutely, yeah.
If we can pull that out of here and then we pull this list out.
Yeah, if you look, yes.
Referendum.
If you look at the other attachments, um there is a, Tim and I went through here and I just highlighted, we were actually categorizing based on referendum, based on things that we can do for um general maintenance. And so we went through in all the highlighted areas. I didn't total it up, but there's definitely a lot of those items that they shouldn't be categorized as third party. We can do a midterm.
Yeah.
I didn't have time to, you know, break it up just based on a meeting on uh piece with thirteen, I think it was. But um again, I'm, I'm just looking at, do we want to start engaging Wolf and Mark and Johnson with this list? You're not committing to anything, but there's work that needs to be done, especially during the holidays, to put it on their radar.
I would say yes.
Yeah.
Prioritizing, right?
Because then when it comes down to overall cost, again, the twenty-five, uh twenty-five percent is just, it's a guess.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say yes, and in terms of even the prioritization of the spending, but right, we want to pull out anything for fund eighty because we've got no intended purpose for that money. We want to prioritize any of those first, get that money used. And then general fund would be the second priority.
Yeah, so again, I'm hearing thumbs up in terms of just engage um Mark and Johnson and Wolf, who's been our partner, to say, what is this going to cost? To get some really hardcore costs in front of the board.
So one of these issues, the biggest, one of the biggest one on here is the uh the elephants in the tech head room. Now Wolf was instrumental in installing that system. Do we, how, how do, I guess you'll figure it out. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
I'm like, this was theirs to begin with. Why, and now we're there gonna?
Well, they, we've already had the discussion and they kind of threw it back at me and I said, well, you can't do that because I wasn't here. So you can't do that.
I feel like they really failed with that. They dropped it big time.
Yeah, and what they told me Chuck was, well, here's what our discussion was. And I'm like, I, I, okay, tell me.
They sold us on that like nobody's business. They said, well, that was going to take care of us.
So they told me that it was the water line, it was digging up the pavements, it was the sprinkler system. And it's like, okay, but the short term, and again, I.
They designed a system that does not work.
Yes.
And I don't know what that, I don't know what dust collection has to do with fire suppression.
Yeah.
But.
Well, I'm not stuck with Wolf. I mean, uh this is my first um go at Wolf. I worked with different architects in the past. If there is.
I think, I'm happy with Wolf, but I think they need to dig a little deeper or find somebody or sub that is helpful and a, or an expert or something.
Well, I'll gauge this and say this is.
Two or three, right?
Well, they'll do that as part of their process.
Not the, yeah, the, all the subcontractors will follow that type of bidding process. But the architecture, you know, typical schools, they go with what they know. Um, whether that's right or wrong, uh I don't know. I mean, I would ask the board members, are you happy with Wolf? There's nothing that is concerning to me. I would agree with you Chuck, they dropped the ball. And when we sat in some of these meetings where it's like, let's fix this. I have a teacher that goes home and blows black crap on his nose on a daily basis and the doors open and Arabs running around because the, the fire alarm is going off and it just, there's too many issues.
Yeah, what, what is the point of having an alarm system and security door if the twenty yards that way is the door open? A big garage door, you can drive your car right in there. Like, and otherwise, and if it's not open, it's unusable. I think it's just ridiculous that they put us in this position.
Well, I would say so, uh Tom Laquey, who was my welding, he ran the welding academy that is no longer in New Richmond. And I had him come as just an acquaintance of mine when we were having issues with it. And he looked at that and it took him literally five minutes and said, what are you doing?
Yeah, so, so they'll figure it out, but I just need to get my confidence back in that. If I got the rest, I've been.
Well, and I will definitely pass on to them that, you know, the board, um yeah, you sold the board on this and it doesn't work. What are we going to do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so more information to come on that.
Yeah.
Um, in part of that, I, I, sorry, is there any other questions? As part of that uh prioritization, and I, I did outline this to the, the staff today. Um, and they had the same reaction as you guys did when I said, if the, any part of this PA system fails, we have to go to eBay. Um, they had the same reaction as you did the first time, like, okay, that's, we all know that secondary parts is what eBay does. So um Frank has done an extensive amount of work getting quotes and bids and so forth. So you will see Frank's uh recommendation to move forward. Um, it's a rather large um number, but in the same regard, this is safety, this is our bell system, this is attached to our phone system, um is just, it's truly a priority. And we're on borrowed time, unfortunately. So unless you have questions, um I can speak more to it if you have any, but.
Miss Hesse, may I make a motion to approve the recommendation if Frank gets printed?
All right, there's a motion on the table from Derek. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Oh.
Second by Chuck?
I want to check the line.
Yeah, give the next one.
Any further discussion or more questions? Here, if at all, those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
All right, and the last one is, um I have this on the agenda just from a standpoint of, um I didn't want to have a closed session, so in the administrative content, because it's protected under legal um conversations, uh that is the final number that is being talked to with in terms of with uh Tim Johnson's lawyer for plea agreement. The restitution number was uh through the number of phone calls, conference calls, et cetera, uh between Trevor, myself and the DA, uh we have now narrowed that number down. Um, just as close as Friday, uh there was a new subpoena list that came out and some of the individuals don't know about it, um but it was shared with me. And so I wanted to make sure that uh that was, um I, I don't think the courts sometimes communicate in the uh fashion that they should. Um, but I just wanted to provide that update. Um, the trial is still set for the twenty-first through the twenty-third. And basically, everything has to be agreed upon in terms of subpoenas, et cetera, by the middle of December. So there's no other update. Just want to make sure that that was communicated.
So if the trial happens, he can't go to Walthby?
No.
Sorry, Chuck.
That's the least of my worries.
You're on like a lot of years in the road going.
Yeah, well, you don't get level two.
I've only missed one.
Uh, it's okay. Got to do what you got to do.
Yep.
Yep.
All right. Any questions?
So I guess like right now, does it look like it's going to court?
So.
There's still things to be addressed to settle out of court. There's still a great opportunity to settle out of court?
Pam wrote me and I can't share it on the screen, but I will tell you that based on how the subpoena list has changed, that was my interpretation, that, oh, the plea must be not agreed upon. And she said, no, that's not the case. They're still having those conversations. Everything has to be further approved by the due date of mid-December. And so, yes, it's still a 50/50 chance of going to trial or being settled out of court. But the court, I mean, the plea is a combination of jail time, three to five years and the restitution amount that you see. If I do get a records request for that, I will not share because it's still part of the overall court. But at some point, that's gonna be made public. But I wanted to make sure that my meetings were on record for you to see how I got to those numbers.
Anything else? Alright, there are no communications, correct? Okay. And our next meeting will be on December 15th.
Yep, so that's all.
16:00.
6:00.
Steve?
6:00.
6:00.
I will likely have to do it right. Who's gonna make it out at now?
I'll see you next week, so.
Yeah.
I forgot that we changed the topic.
Alright, anything else on as far as meetings? If not, I'll let her create a motion to adjourn.
So.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jordan? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We can't go to court.
It'll be nice, but. Tell me that's a secret. Please have a explosion in college tomorrow. The love was on a car crash here, that would be right. Yeah. But I was on the.
I think, okay.
We are moving on the way. I think the first couple of days.
I know it's at the first time it was posted and I was like.
Yeah, it's.
I was like.
Roll the hog nurse.
Like, I don't know what it's supposed to be.
Every two to three hours, you know.
Then I saw it again and I was like, hmm, we should probably.